Okay, so I'm gonna call to order the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, at 3:02 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you, Inga. So, virtual meeting introduction. It seems like we're all here and have figured out how to do a virtual meeting. So this is what I'm gonna try to do as we progress through the meeting. As items on the agenda come up for us to vote on, I'm just gonna go to each person and ask them if they have any questions or comments. So I'll just go right down the line. I'm gonna give everybody, I'm gonna try and remember to do this, two opportunities to speak on each item. You don't have to. I'm just gonna give you two opportunities, but that's all I'm giving you. And then there's one item I know for sure that we have to do a roll call vote on. And is that...
That's number seven. The Resolution 2020-07 for the issuance of the bonds, right Dan?
Yes, it just makes it easier so I can notate who's a yea and a nay.
The rest, we'll just, for votes, I'll just ask all those in favor, all those opposed, like we normally do.
You could raise your hand too, since we can see everybody if you really want to.
Yeah, yes. And so if it gets too weird and it seems like we need a roll call vote to get through the agenda, then we can switch to that. I think we'll be okay. I think it's just important that we all remember to stay quiet until it's our turn, because it's just impossible to do these Zoom meetings if there's two or three people trying to talk at once. And Inga can mute us too, if we don't behave.
I do have the mute all button, so get ready for it.
Including me. Including me. Before I move on, raise your hand if you have any questions about how the meeting will progress after this. Like, raise it so I can see it, you know, like this. Okay, perfect, you guys are amazing. All right. Item number three. Can I, okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So if you could raise your hand if you're gonna make that motion and, you know, the first, okay. Bill has motioned that he will make, has raised his hand that he will make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, okay, no, no, no. Now we gotta, I call on people. You raise your hand and I call on you. You don't raise your hand and then blurt out second.
Have it.
I know, I knew it, I just knew it. So Bill Wilson has motioned to approve the agenda and Ryan has said he will second it and not follow the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can say aye.
I'm gonna mute myself.
We don't wanna get yelled at.
So it seems like although everyone is in favor for approving the agenda unanimously. Item number four is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And these are items that are listed on the agenda that we will be discussing today. As far as I know, Devin is the only person in the audience. Devin, do you have any comments on anything? Okay, Devin is shaking his head no. So seeing no other public comments, I'm going to move on to number five. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-06, declaring a local state of emergency for the City of Milton in response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Al, did you wanna talk about this?
This is a resolution actually that Anisa and myself and Attorney Schrader and Chief Mark Ward put together a couple of weeks ago. And at the time that we put it together, the guidance that we received from kind of the Rock County Emergency Management was, we don't know that you necessarily need to do it yet, but it's nice that you have it prepared. And then in talking with Scott last week, their advice has changed. So really what this does is provide us an opportunity, when this is all over, to hopefully apply for reimbursement to those funds that will be made available, as well as allow for, in the event that, God forbid, things get worse, certain decisions can be made in a more expeditious fashion. We are already pretty nimble here at the City of Milton in the sense that we've been allowing phone-in meetings for quite some time for a number of council members, but other communities didn't have that. So many communities declared states of emergency weeks and weeks and weeks ago simply to have that be a part of their procedures. But that, other than that, this is pretty much the same resolution that we prepared, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, and we're just kind of waiting to see if something changed. It's not as though anything has gotten worse in terms of the city operations, but just more so that the guidance from the Rock County Emergency Management Team was that it's probably best to have it in place. So if things do get worse, you're not scrambling to throw something together.
Okay, thanks Al. So I'm gonna just go down the lists of names. And when your name is called, if you want to speak on this item, you can speak on it. So the first person I have on my list is Larry.
I have nothing.
Bill?
No comment. Gonna be supportive.
Teresa?
No comment.
Ryan?
No comment.
Jerry is not here. Linda?
No comment, I support it.
Okay, I don't think I missed anybody. I'm gonna ask for a motion then. And like we did before, if you wanna make the motion, you'll raise your hand. Is there a motion to approve item number five, Resolution 2020-06, declaring a local state of emergency for the City of Milton in response to COVID-19 pandemic? Larry has motioned, is there a second? Ryan has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Good job, everybody. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Linda has motioned and Bill has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven. Now, this is the item that we're gonna have a roll call vote when it's time. And then we also have a guest that can speak to this item also. So item number seven is Resolution 2020-07, authorizing the refinancing issuance and sale of $4,020,000 taxable convertible to tax exempt general obligation refunding bonds. Dan, I'll let you start off and then you can introduce our guests that may want to speak on this.
Okay. So what this is, this is a continuation of what we had talked about about a month ago. Baird had reached out to us several months ago about some ideas on refinancing the Public Works Building, the City Hall PD building, and then most recently, the lift station work. And we had, and the direction from the council in early March was to try and obtain whatever savings we could get, kind of catch while the iron curtain was hot, so to speak. And as you all know, the last month, the markets have been up and down, left and right, and every other direction. And we were able to secure a pretty good rate of 2.33% on refinancing all that debt, saving a gross amount after all the expenditures of about $177,000, $178,000. That's the quick elevator speech. And I'll punt it over to Brad to talk about a little bit more of the details. And then I'll open it up to questions.
Okay, thanks Dan. First, I'm Brad Vigot, I'm with Baird Public Finance. Really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. I wanna just walk through the attachment to your agenda that's labeled PB. It's the third attachment underneath item number seven. You know, on the second page of that attachment, I have a summary of this new issue that's refinancing prior debt of the city. And it's got the terms of repayment. And I wanna point out, pretty important, that this new issue is callable at any time. So with a 30-day notice. So if there's TID revenues available, or if there's some other source of revenue, or if rates drop even further, the city has the opportunity to refinance or pay this off again. On the third page, what I'd like to just highlight here is the prior issues that are being refinanced with this, with this bank loan. And that's your 2011, 13, and 2019 issues. If you proceed, go on to that fourth page, there's a snapshot of what this debt, the city's debt profile looks like after refinancing these issues. Replacing all of the callable maturities, that's the callable principal payments that are in the yellow boxed in area, with the $4 million, $20,000 refunding bond. And you're replacing interest rates that range from 3.5% to 4.5% or 4.25% with rates that are gonna be at 2.33. And that's what's generating savings. The savings on a budgetary basis are shown on the right-hand side. So that's the annual impact of the city budget. And I should point out, we did not extend the repayment period of the individual prior issues. So for example, your 2019 issues were scheduled to be paid off in 2028. They're still being paid off in 2028. And it's just combined with, you know, the overall debt issue of the, that's here in front of you today for 2020. So we're not kicking the can down the road, you're not extending these repayments. We're simply exchanging higher rate debt with lower rate debt. And as Dan mentioned, the gross savings detailed near the bottom of, right on the page here, And that's after paying the issuance expense for the transaction. So that's really the bottom line savings to the city. So with that, I'd be glad to go into more detail if you like, or answer any questions.
So if you have a question on this item, I'm just gonna go ahead and go through by name like we did before. Larry?
I have no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion. And then, Inga, do you wanna do the roll call vote, or do you want me to?
I'll do it, just 'cause I have everyone's name written down already.
Okay, all right. So raise your hand, oh Bill, look at him. If you'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution 2020-07, authorizing and refinancing issuance and sale of $4,020,000 taxable convertible to tax exempt general obligation refunding bonds. And then Linda, did I see your hand up to second that motion? Okay, and then Inga will do the roll call.
Alderperson Clark?
Aye.
Alderperson Holbrook?
Aye.
Alderperson Lane?
Aye.
Alderperson Roche?
Yes.
And Alderperson Wilson?
Aye.
And motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the TIFF Development Agreement with Red Hawk Apartments of Milton LLC. And Al will discuss this.
Yeah, as I'll line in the memo, this is an amendment that was requested by the developer. I think these conversations started probably back in maybe early March, maybe even late February. And they started really around the concept of a letter of credit, but then obviously, as the pandemic started to swing into full gear, the conversation probably became more poignant in terms of the timing. So what the developer had originally proposed was to eliminate the requirement for a bank-held letter of credit. And based on discussions we had with the developer through Attorney Schrader and his attorney, what we have come up with is that they would issue, in essence, they would issue their own letter of credit, meaning that they would set aside a bank account in escrow that we would have access to as the city in order to ensure that those public improvements are made as part of this development once it starts. So the mechanism, for all intents and purposes, on our end is identical. But really, from the developer's side, it allows them to kind of sidestep the costs associated with having a letter of credit issued to them. I've never done a letter of credit myself, from a personal standpoint, but, and speaking to the developer's attorney, those carried with them a fairly substantial cost in order to have those issued, and that's a sunk cost for them. So in talking with Attorney Schrader and then kind of convening with their legal representation, we agreed that a letter of credit that they would finance themselves would be sufficient as well. It doesn't change any of the financial liabilities, it doesn't change any of the financial figures. It simply changes the mechanism in which the letter of credit is held. So from our standpoint, we were in favor of it. It also changed, the other portion of the amendment is a change to the start date of their project. Originally, it said that they would begin construction on March 31st of 2020, and that has been moved to July of 2020, which, again, from our perspective, doesn't really matter. We don't necessarily care when they start, we care when they finish. And they have not changed their finish date, which is still December 31st of 2021. And so it doesn't change any of the finances, doesn't change any of the increment, doesn't change any of the responsibilities. For all intents and purposes, we probably could have amended the agreement to remove the start date, because from our perspective, it doesn't have any consequence to us. So we were in favor of both of those changes. And requires a TIFF Development Agreement amendment to do so. So that's what's prepared today.
Okay, Larry, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, I have one question. Al, that the funds that are kept in escrow, if you will, are held. The access to that, is that still the developer's access? Or is the city notified if funds are taken out of there?
Well, we would, we would have access to the funds. And they would have to, and Mark can certainly jump in if he feels necessary. They would, in essence, they would have to deposit monies into an escrow account in the amount that we require them to do so. Then they would have to prove that those funds have been deposited. Similar to what we've done with Red Hawk Farms on a number of occasions, they can then, as time goes on and public improvements are made and then accepted by the community, we will allow them to reduce that, the amount that's in that account. I think your question is, is what if they, on, you know, April 8th, show us there's a million dollars in there, on an April 9th, they drain the bank account? Would we be notified? I don't know that we would be notified, but in the event that we needed to draw from that account, if those funds weren't in there, they would be in breach of contract.
And I'll jump in. Is my speaker working now?
Yep.
Oh, great.
In fact, one of the provisions in the amendment is that the specifications for setting up the escrow account need to be approved by myself. And those specifications will include that they cannot reduce the amount in that account without the permission of the city council. So the city will be protected in that regard. The bank will be a party to that escrow agreement. So the bank would be liable if it allowed for a reduction of the amount in that account without permission of the council.
Larry, does that answer your question? Do you have any follow-up?
No, I'm satisfied with the answer.
Okay. Bill, any questions or comments?
No, I was gonna ask a similar question, that answers it.
Okay. Teresa, any questions or comments?
No, that covers it.
Ryan, questions or comments?
The only comment I'd make is I know in my international business work for Hoffcor, we deal with letter of credit from time to time, and yeah, they are expensive to set up. And those are slightly different letters of credit, but I imagine it's similar cost and similar process. But yeah, they get expensive.
Thank you. Linda, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the amendment to the TIFF Development Agreement with Red Hawk Apartments of Milton LLC? Is there anything else that needs to be in that motion, Mark?
No, that's adequate.
Okay, and I see that Ryan had raised his hand to make that motion. Is there a second? I see Larry has raised his hand to second it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Number nine, discussion and possible action on Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy. Al?
I was gonna let Inga take this one.
Oh, Inga, go ahead, Inga.
Well, the, I'm sure you all have heard that the Families First Coronavirus Response Act was approved, which provides expanded FMLA for employees. And there's also a emergency sick leave component to it as well. The city, at this point, our policy has been much more generous than what the FFCRA provides for. So in the event that that policy changes, we wanted to have something in place that would address these legal changes as well. And in addition, we wanted to have a definition in place for our emergency responders, which we've included in the policy as sworn law enforcement personnel and public works employees. The reason we included those two categories was, obviously, with our law enforcement staff, we can't go down to, you know, only having one or two officers available. And then same thing with our public work staff. If there's a utility situation happening, we only have four utility staff members. So we need to make sure that we're able to respond to emergencies for our community as much as we can. So I'm not sure if there are any questions on it at this point, or Al, if you had anything else you wanted to add?
No, that pretty much covers it, yeah. Well, as Inga said, for the most part, we are in excess of what the FFRCA has kind of called for. So in that, in that position, we're in good shape. It's not as though we had to kind of extend or expand benefits to our employees. We were already kind of offering commensurate or better benefits, as it was. But as Inga said, in the event that things change, we wanna make sure that that was identified, simply because we don't know what the timeline of this is. It might be six weeks, it might be six months, it might be, I don't know.
Okay. Larry, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Bill? No?
No comments.
Teresa?
Yes, I did have a couple. I think, first of all, Inga, you deserve a lot of credit for the work that you put into it. It obviously involved a great deal of time and effort to put all that together. But I do have some questions. You know, when I looked through the proposal, it is something that needs to be clear, not only to us, but to citizens or anybody that would ask about it. And I wanna make sure that it's not only for us, but accountable to all our taxpayers as well. And so when I look at it, how do we validate that everyone is still working even though they're not necessarily in their same workplaces? You know, we, we still have to account for that time and that, those places. You know, if someone calls in to me and says, you know, where were they instead of in their offices and were paying for their work time? How do we answer for that, even though, you know, how do we say they're in a different environment and what are they doing? You know, when I, you know, example I would give you would be just like Anisa. You know, she has a different work environment, she's still working her same hours. And so she has a different explanation for that, that job. How do we do that with all of our other employees? Other than, you know, when we look at the government, the federal government's requirements, and, you know, they fall into those areas. How do we then fill up those other gaps?
Al, I just wanna say one thing, just so I can tell you about, a little bit about our situation. So how the county approached it was, we aren't working at home. We are at home in a crisis doing our work. And the expectation is not exactly the same, because there are certain things that we, we can't do. And then there's training opportunities. I don't think, as far as accounting goes, the expectation is we are working eight hours at a computer all day long, just so, so you understand that. But I'll let Al talk.
Oh, yes, I do understand that. But you accommodate, or account for the work, that, the time, or, for example, if you, you, what are you doing instead of being at work, at the work that you were doing? And we have to do the same to account for our employees of the city as well. What are we doing instead of there? You know, would, are you going to, for example, if I were accounting for my time instead of being in an office, well, am I going to, I don't know, watch some videos that are helping to enrich my time in my office when I come back to work? Am I doing some reading that will help to enrich my time when I work with, for example, if I work on how to deal with difficult people or deal with people that, I don't know, would help with my accounting skills? Or if I learn how to do different skills that will enrich my ability to do my job? Those kinds of things.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's different for each individual, because we have such a wide variety of people and tasks. You know, we certainly would encourage people to do exactly what you're doing, or what you just described. But I don't know that we can specifically say that an employee in the Public Works Department who was home due to the staggered schedule spent eight hours, you know, doing civic training. I think that there's a lot of leeway that we provide to employees. What we have said is that during regular work hours, you must be available to work. Meaning that you must, if we call, I mean, for Inga and Dan and myself and folks up at City Hall, that's easy. It's easy to do, we're on our computers, we're plugged in 24/7. For somebody who's a laborer out in public works, you know, we can't sweep the streets from home. But we do have a staggered schedule, we do have folks coming in every day doing those tasks. So I, I don't know that it's possible to account for every minute of every day, but we hope that, you know, people are doing their best. And, you know, I think that it's, it's a difficult time for, for, for all the organizations. You know, we, you know, the school districts that aren't offering virtual lessons, but are still paying the teachers, they're in the same boat. Now, they're hoping that they're doing the right thing, but... They're hoping that they're doing the right thing, but part of it is, we're supposed to be home.
Yeah.
I know that doesn't answer your question. I know it doesn't.
One of the, one of the things that I, that I don't want to do is lay off all the city employees and cut off their health insurance, you know, and just leave everybody hanging. I think that would be a cruel and unethical thing to do. This is not anybody's fault. So we want to keep, their salaries are budgeted. I'm not gonna lay, I, I don't want to lay everybody off and then pave more roads with their salaries. I think that would be awful, too. So I, I don't think it's possible for us to replicate at home everything that they do on their job. All we can do is do the best that we can.
I think we, you know, have some obligation to our taxpayers to provide some types of either inservicing them to help them do their job better or ask them to do some jobs to help the community perform better that they can do individually or within six feet apart from one another, so that they don't put themselves in a position where they are confronting the virus either. But, you know, I don't want to, no, I don't want to lay anyone off at all, but I.
So with the, I think it was last week or the week before, I sent out the employee newsletter and I included information about the different online learning opportunities through CivMCC, and then also some information about learning opportunities through the library as well. So we're hoping that our employees are going to be taking advantage of those things when they are at home. And Public Works, you guys are doing a staggered schedule to make sure that, you know, the, even the minor tasks are still getting done, but just in a different way. So I don't know if that, also, I don't know if that answers your question either, but I think we're trying to do the best.
They're all reporting every day and doing.
Not, not every day. I don't know if Howie would want to talk about the schedule a little bit, but.
Yeah, well, every day somebody's, every day there is a group of employees there. They start at different times and end at different times, so there's no overlap. Each one of them is doing a, is doing a, like a solitary job, one that they can do by themselves. I think the only one that we really have that requires two people is brush clean up, brush pickup. So every day there are people at Public Works. Not everybody is there every day, though, because there just simply isn't, I don't, I don't know that there's enough tasks for everyone to do. And it is a balancing act, and Howie and I have talked about this at great length. The things that we can do to show the public that we're still working, we want to do. But we also don't, you know, I, I've actually gotten quite a bit of pushback on this from other people, saying sweeping the streets is not essential. You are putting the community and those employees in danger, simply to prove some kind of political point. And I don't, I don't agree with that perspective, but I can appreciate that perspective. So it is a challenge. And, and, and I, if someone was to call me and say, what did Joe Davis do yesterday? First, I would check with Howie, and if Joe was at home, you know, I would have to be honest with that person and say, you know, Joe's at home, making sure that he's not endangering himself or the community. When he returns, this is what he will do. It's, again, it's a lot easier for PD and for City Hall. Some of Ashley's staff is in the same situation. They worked on an RFID project in which they could all work in separate sections of the library. But, you know, Jamie's done a good job of, of keeping a social media presence. But I don't, I, I, I don't, I'll just be honest, I don't think it's reasonable to try to account for everybody's time for every minute of everybody's day, for eight hours a day, simply to prove a point to somebody who may ask that question later. And I'm not trying to be, you know, antagonistic about it, but this is a situation that is unprecedented. And if we were a private sector industry and we weren't making profits, we could easily lay people off and say, we're not making profits. But as Anisa pointed out, the funds are budgeted, and they have been budgeted since November. Even if every employee sat home every day until now and the end of the year, the taxpayers wouldn't be losing out, or they wouldn't, it wouldn't cost them more. It would cost them the exact same amount as if COVID-19 never happened. But we're going extra in trying not only to, to keep people safe, but continue to do tasks that we can do in a safe way.
Looks like Bill has a.
Yep, I was just gonna go around once to everybody. Ryan, do you have any comments?
I don't, no.
Okay, Linda, and then I'm gonna come back to you, Bill.
I just think that people, I understand what Teresa's saying. I feel like our Public Works Department does a very good job with their log of what they do on a daily basis. And, you know, this is a time of crisis where we're also asking our own people, our city's staff, take care of yourself and take care of your family. And, you know, but I know also that people are worried about not having any money, so they're gonna be probably going through our budget with a fine-tooth comb again. But, you know, first and foremost, we have to take care of our people. And if that means that we have to change our shifts so that we don't have as many people in one place at a time, then that's what we have to do.
Okay, Bill, I'm gonna go back to you.
Yeah, the, the point that I wanted to make, you know, really has to do with two things. One is mental health, and the other is staff retention. You know, we, mental health, you know, the last thing we want to do is create an era of uncertainty for staff members that makes them more unhealthy at a time when they need to be as healthy as they possibly can be. And so, you know, I think that certainty in terms of, you know, your job is safe, you're employed, your health insurance is in place, I think just that assuredness is, is really important. The other one, I, I think, is, is staff retention. There are some really awful costs to the city if at the end of this whole thing, the library staff decides that they can find better opportunities in Sun Prairie or, you know, you know, someplace else. And so I think treating our employees well is gonna serve us well. That said, you know, what I've seen of, of the city employees, we can be really, really proud. You know, I'm closest, obviously, to the library, given my history. But, you know, every day, Jamie and, in fact, I posted on Facebook today, we should be paying Jamie's sister. Because, you know, Jamie's sister Jill is appearing almost daily in, in the diversion stuff that Jamie is posting to help keep others safe. Al already mentioned the RFID program that's been going on. Ashley's been doing programming and the podcast kinds of things. And so to the degree possible, I think, you know, the staff, and not just in the library, the staff has been putting in, you know, exceptional efforts. And I, I, I think we make sure that we're offering those opportunities and pointing out, you know, here are, you know, here are, are things that are available to you in the way of staff development. I suppose we could tell the library staff, we want you to read every book in the library, that that's a good idea. I don't think that that's what they're doing. I, I, I think there's planning going on, I think there are activities going on that are really good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back around now. And the other thing, I do know, like, they're, they are having some Zoom staff meetings. People are, and we have also given department heads the authority to engage their staff during this period. And to, they know their staff and their departments the best, but to, to give them the opportunity to adapt with their staff and make the changes that they need. Larry, do you have any other comment on this?
No, no, just a brief one. Based on my employer and the situation I'm in, we have environmental services staff, quite an extensive staff throughout our system of 8,000 employees. And so places need to be cleaned, operating rooms need to be cleaned, hospital locations have to be kept clean. And they're staggering that with staff, which is a sacrifice to everybody in that area, because you can get more done with more people available at a given point in time. But they've staggered it, and that's allowed Mercy to continue to employ all those people, even though only about half are there at any given moment throughout the day. That's one thing. I can relate to what Teresa's saying in terms of being accountable. And I think, I think we've got a good framework here in this document and our current procedures. And some of this just relies on employees to be who they are. And I think that we have some really good employees and some really capable leadership. And they'll account for their time enough, worthy and trustworthy men.
Thanks, Larry. Teresa, did you want to make another comment?
Well, just that, I, I agree with you, Bill. The library staff has done a tremendous job in being very innovative and creative about how to use their time and find a variety of projects that needed to be completed, and they just haven't had the time to do so. We had a meeting the other night and they discussed many of those. And I have no intention to suggest taking anyone's job away from them or time away from them at all. I'm just asking all of us to think about, you know, how do we defend this and defend their jobs to taxpayers? How are we all going to be accountable for this time? Are there ways to be creative about using this time to enrich their jobs when it, if it can't be on the job the way it normally is? Are there other ways to do it? When I talk to a taxpayer, can I defend it? If we can't, we can't, but we need to be ready for that discussion, so.
I think we absolutely can. I, I don't think that that, yeah, I mean, if that was the question that was asked to me, are people making the best of their time in, in continuing to serve the city? I, I would say, and obviously, you know, it's obvious, I would say this, but I would say yes, absolutely. I mean, at City Hall, there really hasn't been any day that we haven't all been here anyways, other than just a handful, a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, that was one of the reasons that we specifically talked about having Public Works employees out in the streets. And, and again, I, I will say, we have been criticized for doing that. So there's another end of this spectrum. There are people that are saying we are irresponsible for sending people out. So, you know, in, in many of these situations, we, it's a lose-lose. But I would, I would absolutely 100% feel comfortable that we're doing the best we can with the situation at hand to make sure that employees' time is being useful while still respecting the social distancing and the mental health aspects that, that Bill talked about. That was one of the things that I've talked about since the very, very onset of this, is that people need to take care of themselves, too. This is incredibly stressful. It's, it's tough. So I would feel comfortable defending that. And, and I guess if anybody has that, is approached with that question, I would be more than willing to have that conversation, either with A, that individual, or B, you as an elected official to help kind of explain what we've done. Howie has, I've referenced this many times in pretty much every email that I've sent to everyone, that Howie has a list of lonely tasks, as he calls them. The other morning when I was driving in, I saw Ward patching potholes, I saw Ken in the sweeper, and I saw Murph out doing something, whatever, whatever Murphy does. I mean, they're out there, and there's a reason that we have sent them out there. And again, I think it's important to note, we have been criticized for doing that. There are people that think we are being irresponsible by sending people out. So it's, it's tough to balance it.
Well, I do think it's something that, you know, we have ongoing conversations about with department heads. We do Zoom meetings with them just to check in. And when all is said and done, I know we're all gonna look back and review, you know, what, what worked best, what are areas we want to improve. I don't, unfortunately, I don't think this is gonna be the, this is gonna be the end of it. So I do want to go to Ryan, though. Do you have a, a second comment on this subject?
I was just gonna add that I actually think it's unlikely they're gonna ask us about the financial side of it. I think they are, you're gonna hear more comments along the lines of, why did we have them in the streets more than asking, what are they doing when we're not, they're not actually in the streets doing stuff? For example, using Public Works as the example there. I think more people are gonna be asking, why were they in the streets? And I think that Al's kind of given the great, the right answer for how you'd respond to that, just since that we're trying to keep all the staff employed, trying to keep them with us and getting a paycheck and getting insurance coverage and doing what already needs to be done. And honestly, this is already covered in the budget, there's already set aside funds for that. And we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe and keep things moving in the city.
Linda, do you have a second comment?
Well, the, it's all I was gonna say is, we also have a responsibility to take care of our city as far as our wastewater treatment plant and our water. And the things that we do out in our streets are what we do to keep, because that's regulation. And, and I'm very happy to say that we have professional people working in this city, and I'm very proud that we, that we have the people that we do, because they do such an awesome job. And, you know, people, I feel like people don't always realize that those, those things that the Public Works Department do, I mean, that's our water. That's our water right there, and there's places that are having problems with their water and their septics and their sewers. And I feel pretty good about what we have here. So that's, you know, that's another angle that you can go with, is, you know, we've got an environmental responsibility.
So is there a motion to approve the Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy?
Anisa, I think, I think Howie wanted to, I saw Howie raise a hand.
Sorry, I, I looked over at my printed agenda. Howie, go.
Okay, part, part of the reason, too, that we have to have those guys on call is because there are regulations they have to do. Even the street sweeping is a DNR regulation, the water is DNR regulations, the testing, the sampling. And they need to be on call, because even when we have them separate, we've already had to call in more than the separate crews to work together for emergencies. So they need to stay on call no matter what. And when they're on call, we're obligated to pay them. But if they're not on call, like say tonight, the thunderstorm, which hopefully we don't get, if we have an emergency in the street, we have to have them come in. So they need to stay on call, and also they're cross-trained enough that if one crew disappears, the other crew can still do the work. So that's, that, I mean, that's a good justification of why they have to stay on call and stay on the, on the staff. And also the jobs they're doing are, even though filling potholes, it's, you have to get around. You have to, you know, even the brush, that's, I mean, it's just something that, that makes people feel better, and they're doing it alone, you're getting rid of it. Part of the things are, we don't want everything, when we get the all-clear, to have just a, a mob of things to do, May 1st, June 1st, July 1st. And even some of our own ordinances, we're gonna have to start mowing the grass, or we're violating our own laws. So we're kind of keeping them on call for emergencies a lot, and a lot of it is regulations, even flushing hydrants. We have to do that, you know, that's just a, you know, they, they, they're not gonna cancel all the DNR laws. They've, you know, extended some of the rules, but you still have to take care of them and do them. So, so being on call for emergencies and keeping the, the split staff. is a way that you don't have to worry as much if something happens. And then we have done a few things, like been talking to Inga about getting some of the classes that they can do at home. Like we have to do a flagging class now, it's a new regulation. They can take that home, do the test, and then we're certified. We don't have to spend summertime on some of those things. So if, if they read that stuff, just check off what they've done, then that takes care of everybody sitting in a class of the summer, too.
One thing I will say to Howie's point, too, sorry to keep extending this. Howie especially has been very clear with his staff. In fact, he's giving me examples of times that this has come up. Employees are to be available to work. If you're not available to work, then you're, then you need to take PTO. So if you, if you're gonna run the Menards at 10 o'clock in the morning, you, you need, you need to take PTO for that. And Howie, Howie's guys are doing that, and they have. We, Inga processed payroll last week, and there were a number of people that have taken PTO. And we have kind of said, hey, if, if we get a, if we get a comment that somebody saw you down at Festival Foods in the middle of the day, you know, and, and you didn't take PTO, we're gonna have, we're gonna force you to take PTO. And you know, that's not, it's not gonna go well for you. And not to name names, we had that already happen once, and that individual was forced to take PTO. So, yeah, not that we're looking to create an environment of tattling, but in the event that any of you are out and about Target or whatever, and you see somebody, doesn't hurt to ask.
Because the intent is to keep people home. And if you're not staying home, then you should be using appropriate leave time.
Correct.
That's, that's the approach we've taken, and that's the approach for all the, all the departments, then.
So that might help as well, Teresa. Cause I can certainly see how that could stick in somebody's craw, and I would absolutely agree with that. It's, it's 1 o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon, and you see somebody that, you know, works for the city of Milton wandering around Target. Well, that doesn't, I can see why that would be frustrating. So we do, we've, we've had those conversations many times.
Yeah, I have, I appreciate the discussion. I think this is, this is a good discussion on this because I know that when this first started out, department heads had a lot of discussion about how do we move forward with city services? How do we not get our employees sick or kill them off or get our community sick and cause them to pass away? I mean, it's such a serious virus. So I really do appreciate everybody's thoughts. And I appreciate Teresa bringing this up and us having that discussion.
I think it's good to have this conversation so everybody's on the same page. Obviously, Nisa is privy to a lot of these conversations, Howie and Ashley and Dan and Inga and myself are. So I'm glad that we could all have this conversation together, and hopefully that helps.
Yeah. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask if there is a motion to approve the Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy. Linda, I see is raising her hand for a motion. Is there a second? I see Ryan's hand as a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I just want to say you guys are doing great. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding purchase of a leaf and brush collection truck. Another exciting item.
So as you may recall, last November, when we were having budget discussions, we, well, actually, if you recall, last October, our leaf truck collapsed, literally. And we had to collect leaves within a three-person operation with a big bucket truck and a skid steer and a dump truck. So we have been hoping to purchase a new leaf truck. But what we really wanted to do was have a leaf truck that was multipurpose. The old one that we had, really, that's all it did. So Donnie, specifically Donnie Zimmerman, and Howie have been kind of scouring the globe for, for one of these items. And we finally tracked one down. And in the, in the packet is, are the quotes, it's a lot less than what we thought it was gonna be last November. So that's good news. It is multipurpose. And we should have it available to us because it needs to be kind of manufactured or retrofitted for our purpose in order to make it a multi-use vehicle. We should have it in time for this year's leaf collection season.
Howie, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, it's just, we're trying to get this to be a, well, I guess there is something I'll add. We're trying to get this to be a, just a one-person operation, like it has been in the past. And then the brush collection is always two people, but, but we don't want the leaf collection to be three or four people. So it does save us quite a bit of time over the years. And this should last, if it's like the other truck, it should last 20 years.
Okay, I'm gonna go around then. Larry, any questions or comments?
No comment.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Pretty neat-looking truck. That's it.
The coolness is unbounding. Linda, any questions or comments?
Do we have a name for this truck yet?
Oh, that would be a great community. Okay. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for, I was gonna read it and ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I didn't speak correctly. Let me start over. Is there a motion to guide staff to purchase the leaf and brush collection truck based on the submitted quote? Does that sound okay, Mark?
Yes.
I saw Ryan raise his hand for that motion. See, Teresa, I see her hand for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, we're getting a new leaf brush truck. Awesome. You know what I really like about this next item? Is there's no controversy usually, so I'm sure I just jinxed it. Discussion and possible action regarding 2020 sidewalk installation and concrete work proposal. Howie?
This is for new sidewalk that's going up in by Tower Hills Park and some repairs. And some of the concrete work is for the, where we had water main repairs for some curb replacements and some accessible ramps on a few of the, a couple of sidewalks that just have never had them. So we had three bids, and the low bid is, or low quote is Godini Concrete from Milton. And it's, usually we estimate around $25,000 for sidewalk work. So this is curb and sidewalk work, so it should be within that budget.
Okay. Larry, any questions or comments?
I have no comment.
Bill?
No comments.
Teresa?
No comment.
Ryan?
No comment.
Linda?
Does this bid also include the lawn recovery?
Yes, it's restoration also.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, is there a motion to approve the 2020 sidewalk installation and concrete work with the proposal from Godini? Linda, I see your hand up for a motion. Is there a second? Larry, I see a second.
So specifically, that's to accept the proposal, correct?
Correct. I don't know, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
For Godini.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we're getting some sidewalks done. Item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding a contract renewal and updated fee schedule, Resolution 202005, with General Engineering Company to perform commercial building inspections in the city of Milton.
This was an item that originally was back on our March 17th meeting that we had to cancel abruptly. This is the annual contract that we've had with General Engineering to perform our commercial building inspections as well as their updated fee schedule. In terms of the fee schedule, I believe only one of them was changed, right, Howie? The early start?
They have, there are some of them on that one Exhibit A, there are some of them where they change things like 1 cent per square foot.
Oh.
On a few of those. So it's, it's, it's minimum changes.
Oh, yep, yep.
Yeah, on a few of those. But that, that was the only change is then our, our own city residential fees, we did not change.
Right. And so far, what we have seen over the last six months or however long we've been with GEC is that it has worked out very well, from what I've seen, right, Howie?
Yeah, it has. The, the contractors are familiar with them, you know, because they do this in some other local areas, too. But their, the contacts and stuff they have for getting things done have gone very well.
Okay. Larry, any questions or comments?
No comment.
Bill, questions or comments?
No comment.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No comment.
Ryan, any question or comment?
No comment.
Linda, any questions or comments?
No comment.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 202005 with General Engineering Company to perform commercial building inspections in the city of Milton, a contract renewal with an updated fee schedule? Bill, raise his hand. Is there a second? Ryan has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number 13, discussion and possible action regarding contract changes for the CDBG program with MSA. So maybe we should talk about those acronyms.
MSA is the company that we use to contract with for the, the...
Community Development Block Grant.
Yeah.
CDBG.
They, they, they manage our CDBG funds, our Community Development Block Grant funds. And they are, they take 15%, which is the maximum allowed through CDBG. So MSA is the company, CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant.
And the rule, and the rules have changed effective January 1 from the Department of Administration allowing administration fees to increase by 2%. And of course, they are now asking for that 2%. And so the contract before you reflects that change. And currently, there's about $32,000 in, in cash sitting in the account and $230,000 in outstanding loans out to the community, some of which go back to the 1980s.
So again, CDBG dollars are dollars that are allocated to communities from the federal government. We are part of the Rock County Consortium. We're not an entitlement community. It's a direct allocation of CDBG funds. The goal of the CDBG funds are they're, they're to be recycled, meaning that they revolve, revolving loan funds. So that's why Dan had indicated that there's about $230,000 of outstanding CDBG dollars that will be repaid and then recycled. It may sound like a lot of money, but it's, it's, the process for CDBG is a, is a arduous one at times. Just from my own experience working in Janesville, they have, they're an entitlement community. I think they get, you know, somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 a year. And they have two staff members dedicated directly to CDBG. It is a, it's a tough program. So MSA, most communities contract that out. I think we did it up until 2013 or something like that.
Yeah.
And it was a difficult program to manage, so it's tough.
I have a quick question. When you talked about the figure of 230,000, that's not just in the city of Milton, right?
Yes, that, those are all loans in the city of Milton.
Oh, okay.
The, the dollars that the city has, from what I can gather, we received them sometime in the 80s or 90s as, and we have not gotten new federal dollars in a very long time. And so the, these are just dollars that, you know, loans get paid off, then MSA finds other folks that can benefit that are within the city limit, so.
There was a pretty big project on Madison Avenue a couple of years ago, right? Like two years ago?
$50,000 project that finished up in early 19.
Yeah, and it was a rehab of a, of an older home on Madison Avenue.
And it's a 0% loan. You don't have to repay it until you either sell the property or you choose to repay it, or you pass away, or you turn it into a rental. And we, we did have a situation where one of our loans, we found out that there was a renter living there. And so they were in default of the, of the loan agreement, so they were forced to pay that off.
Okay. Larry, is there any questions or comments?
I just had a clarification. So the MAS, they're the people that monitor that situation of whether people are paying or not paying, whether there's been a purchase of a loan or not, or someone passes.
Not, not really. They just help administer the dollars that, for, for new loans, really is how, their only role. Like, we found out through other means that there was a renter in that one particular property a few years back. And there are no repayment terms. So a lot of times, it's just the homeowner knows that they have this lien on their property. They want to get rid of it. And so then they contact us. We have a list that gets audited every year as part of the annual audit. And I confirm with MSA the amount and let the homeowner know. And they're free to make a payment if they choose. And that, that's that. But there are no repayment terms. Like I said, some of the loans that are out there go back to the mid 80s.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Linda, any questions or comments?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the contract changes for the CDBG program with MSA? Linda, I see you raising your hand for a motion. Is there a second? Teresa?
Teresa.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, so I'm just gonna go around like I did before. Larry, do you have any general items?
I do not, thank you.
Bill, any general items?
No.
Teresa, any general item?
No, I don't.
Ryan, any general item?
Not really, just nice to do this.
Linda, any general items?
No.
Inga, any general items?
Nope.
Ashley? Ashley's muted.
No dinner items.
Okay, Howie, any general items?
People are still building things, so, so they haven't slowed down construction very much compared to... It's slower than last year, but people are still doing things, so trying to do things.
Awesome. Dan, any general items?
I just want to thank Carrie and Rebecca and Ashley especially for helping me get through the audit last week. They were a lifesaver.
Nice. Al, general item?
Nothing in general, other than I just want to thank everybody for kind of being patient and, and understanding in this process. It's challenging and it changes every day. challenging, and it changes every day. Um, you know, I, I remember when I first had a meeting with staff about this pandemic. I think it was on March 5th, and I remember saying that if you would have asked me on March 2nd, would I be having this meeting, I would have said no. We met on the 5th, and then we started meet every single day after that, and that was one month ago, and it feels like it was nine months ago. Uh, but everybody has been fantastic and understanding. Um, Howie and his crews, again, are some of the ones that are out there, uh, every day, and they're doing a great job. It was really tough up here with the election, um, having, you know, to be open, but, uh, you know, Rebecca and Carrie and, and LeAnn kind of working the front lines did a great job, uh, of working through that. And then obviously, yesterday was, um, kind of surpassed everybody's expectations. I don't know exactly how many people we had come through the door, but it was way more than what anybody had thought, um, which is good and bad. It's, um, it's not, it's not good to have people out and about. It's just not good. Yeah, what, and, and, but it's nice to see that we had good voter turnout. I'll never complain about that. Uh, but it's been challenging, and it has been very stressful, and I think, uh, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have to be as understanding as they are and, uh, willing to step up. I would say that we have had to te- tell people to stop doing what they're doing, uh, more so than to say, hey, it's time to pull your own weight. Um, Howie can certainly attest to that, uh, with guys that are, in some cases, kind of begging to come to work, um, because they, that, that's how committed they are. And Howie's staggered schedule was difficult, I know, for some of them, and they fought it very hard. Uh, but, uh, that's, uh, it's a, it's a fine, it's a fine line. And we, we will know that when it's all said and done, we made good decisions, and we made some mistakes. Uh, but I think we were out in front of it, uh, at, at the right time, and hopefully some of, hopefully we made a lot more good decisions than bad.
Bill, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, do we have any idea in terms of voter turnout percentages compared to other times, or is that because of the, the mail-in ballots, is that still an unknown?
It's still an unknown for the most part, uh, but I, I can say that I think we had 1,200 absentee ballots, or over 1,200 absentee ballots. Uh, and then I think we had between 500 and 600 people come through the door yesterday. So, uh, so we were right around, I think, 2,000 total votes cast so far. Uh, and, and, you know, they're all cast, but as we get the next couple of ones in here, um, that number's probably not gonna change much. By comparison, in April of 2016, which would be the most comparable election to this one, I think LeAnn said we had 2,400 votes. So, um, people utilize the absentee, which is great. Um, they utilize the in-person absentee voting, which was good. Uh, and then a lot of people came through the door yesterday, which is okay, but I wish they didn't have to.
Yeah. I just, I wanna thank the staff. Um, I wouldn't wish this on anybody, um, in government, to have to really just, uh, kind of scramble, uh, to put policies together and adapt really quick. Um, Al's right, we started meeting daily, um, and each, it, it was breathtaking at the speed that things changed at. We would have a meeting in the morning, and by the afternoon, there would be another policy change. And I would say for the first couple weeks, and still to this day, things change here and there, but for the first couple of weeks, every day was a different day, and we had to, um, adapt and adjust. Um, it's incredib- I, I can't, I, I don't, I don't know how to explain how stressful it is for the staff to go through that, because always in the front of our minds is safety, you know, safety for staff and safety for our community. Um, I think the next weeks are gonna be hard as the death rate increases, and each day it's gonna get harder and harder till we reach that peak. And then, you know, it's gonna take a long time to come down the other side of that. Um, I'm really proud of our staff. I'm proud of you guys. Uh, we asked you to, to change your meeting schedule and, and stop getting together. And that wasn't easy for me either. Um, I thought of you every day. Um, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to call and reach out to every, every one of you to make sure that you were okay, but please know that I was thinking of everyone. And, um, the community, I think, is doing a really good job, the best they can do, in staying at home. Um, this isn't really fun for anyone. It's really pretty traumatic. I know people have elderly relatives and, and, and young family members, too, and, and we can't, we can't get together with our family and friends that we love. Um, and that, that's hard on all of us. I don't think there's anybody in this community that doesn't have somebody they wanna be with right now that they can't be with. So, um, do you guys mind if you all smile and I take a picture of you? I just gotta take a picture because the public needs to know that we are zooming successfully, and we are still working, and we have the community in mind. Sorry, I looked stupid in the picture, so we had to take it three times.
So you already?
Yes. I already took the picture. Mark, do you have anything? Any general items? How did we do? What's our grade?
Oh, I'd say at least, uh, like I gave you something to work on, so I'll say B+.
Oh, of course. Okay, so what are the questions going forward, Mark?
No, it, I think that, uh, it was conducted well. And, and, uh, I think the, you gave a good opportunity for people to participate in an organized fashion, and if the public in the future wants to participate in these meetings virtually, then I think Inga's got a good system set up for them to do that, so I think that's fine.
Okay, so I'm gonna go around one more time, in case everybody, anybody has last comments before we close the meeting. Larry?
Oh, I just echo everybody's comments previously. Excellent job done by people. I'm going a little stir-crazy personally, but I'm proud of them. But I'm hoping for the best, and praying for the best. Keep on doing what we can do.
Thank you, Larry. Bill?
Just everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Teresa?
Yes, just when you brought up the idea of voting, um, I want to thank LeAnn for all her work over the past several weeks that had to be overwhelming to take care of all of the, um, absenteeism and, um, and the work you guys did yesterday. Um, so I am impressed with all of that. That was a lot of work for all of you, so thank you.
Thanks. Ryan?
Whoever came up with the shower curtains was brilliant.
Yeah, that was great.
I was just gonna say, I heard from my mother-in-law that she, uh, voted in person yesterday, and she said that she felt safe and thought everything was actually very well organized. She was very impressed by the whole thing, the whole setup and stuff. I did absentee ballots, so I didn't get to see it myself.
No, I thought the picture of it was great.
Linda, final comments?
Um, I just wanna thank all of our citizens for following the CDC guidelines, because that's what we all have to do, and, and, and it, not only all of us and our city staff, but we only have, hopefully, we don't have much longer of this, and everybody just hang in there, and we'll get through it, cause we're Milton.
Yep, we are. Well, I send all my prayers and thoughts and love to everybody. It was so nice to see you. Now, don't all raise your hands at once. Our next meeting is April 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to adjourn? Linda? Bill? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay, I know you miss us all, but we all have to go back to our boring lives at home.
I sent you all the Zoom picture.
Awesome.
I just did a screenshot of the screen, so everybody's got it.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
All right.
I'll send it to you, too, Devin. I, I didn't, I didn't include you on it.
All right, bye, you guys.
Bye, everyone.
See you later.
Bye.